We have your attention, please. Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so, and we'll call our meeting to order. If you'll please stand for a moment of prayer and silence. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Ms. Michelle, would you call roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Becky?
Here.
Ms. Rodland?
Here.
Ms. Jennifer?
Here.
Mr. Jonathan?
Here.
Ms. Sheila?
Here.
Ms. Patricia?
Here.
Ms. Dewanna?
Here.
Mr. Trey?
Here.
Mr. Randy?
Here.
Do we have two minutes or three minutes tonight?
It's still three until they change it in the process.
Okay, okay. Do we have any cards tonight for public comments on the agenda items?
Yes.
Okay. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes tonight.
David, are you keeping track?
Yeah, I keep track.
David's gonna keep the track of them.
Okay.
No, not for that one. We have to start at seven eight is what we have to, sorry.
Okay. No comments? Let's move to the report of our administrative librarian, Ms. Michelle.
Everything is good. We just had a meeting about two weeks ago, so nothing's really changed. Y'all are gonna hit on the book move later on in the agenda, so everything's good.
Okay, moving right along. Tonight, we have our special orders for election of officers for board president. At this time, we'll entertain nominations.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Randy DeLaat.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second's not required on nominations, and you may nominate yourself if you choose to.
I'd like to make an alternate nomination for Ms. Jennifer.
I second that.
Who was it? Ms. Patricia?
I couldn't see.
That's okay. Okay, so will you do the alternate first? Oh, we have public comment, okay.
Jordan?
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Jordan Gonzalez, Denham Springs. I'll be quick. I just wanted to say that I hope whoever you pick, in your process of picking, that you just keep in mind, you know, good experience and somebody who has a heart for the library and knows what they're doing. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. What's, um, I'm sorry. Is that it? I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Can we call for?
The first vote is for Ms. Jennifer.
Right.
And let's go for that.
Would you call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Becky?
Yes.
Ms. Rodland?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan?
No.
Ms. Sheila?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Patricia. Ms. Dewanna?
No.
And Mr. Trey?
No.
And Mr. Randy?
No.
All right. And Ms. Jennifer has five votes, four noes.
Congratulations, Ms. Jennifer.
All right, I pass the baton to you.
Item A, new business.
All right, item A is discussion and adoption of the sexually explicit material checklist rubric by use of the Board of Control whenever reading, discussing, reviewing, and creating resolutions regarding material considerations and appeals. We found that when we were looking at the state law and then looking at the books that were up for challenge, that the state law was not easy to read. So, it was requested by several board members that we create a checklist using the law as our basis. So, that's what I have before all of y'all. This is just a checklist that takes the verbiage of the law of what is considered sexually explicit material and just gives us an easier way of looking at the law when we're looking at our books.
Do we need to send this to the policy committee for them to look at it? Or can we just let this stand as a single document?
Yeah, it can stand as a single document. It's not, it doesn't have to be policy unless, you know, y'all wanna make it that way.
And we don't have to act on it.
Yeah, this is just for y'all to use for your own guidelines, and we kind of adopted it too as we're looking through what we're looking for, so that's, okay.
Do you want to add to your motion that we would be sent a copy of this for each of the books in the future?
Okay, so you mean make this a motion that we utilize this checklist whenever reviewing any challenged book? Yeah, that, yeah, so that's my motion, is that whenever the Board considers any challenged book, that we utilize the sexually explicit material checklist.
I second that.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Jennifer.
Ms. Jennifer did.
Chairman can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Can I second it?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we vote on this, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for us to also add to this document the discussion points that the library itself uses, such as content, reading level, age appropriateness, just for our own personal use? Or do we want to just do it strictly?
Yeah, it's y'all's document. If y'all wanna add that to her motion, to Jonathan's motion.
Is that Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see who was talking. Are those items on the form that's filled out when someone has a concern about the book?
This is a document that Michelle sent when I asked about the evaluation.
That's the one that the library uses ourselves when we do a challenged book.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for clarification.
I found it useful when I was reviewing these books, because we didn't have a document. I made my own that had the law on it, and I put these on there as well. And I just found it useful for myself, so that if something comes up at a later date, I can look back and say, oh, yeah, I thought that was not age appropriate because it had XYZ. It may not have necessarily been sexually explicit information. It could have been other kinds of abuse. It could have been drug use. All different kinds of things that I found these particular points very useful for myself. I mean, y'all may not, but just, I found they were useful to have a broader review.
But if those were there and we needed to use them, we could when we're reviewing a book, right?
Right, right.
Yes.
But they're not on this document that's up for vote right now.
So what would we need for this motion, Jonathan?
So, I think that the other things that you're referring to are actually the discretion of the director. Am I correct? The only time we review a book is if it's sexually explicit, as far as I'm aware. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm not sure we need to add the additional, because the bet's taken care of before we receive the book.
True, but what if the law changes?
I think if the law changes, then we would have to.
Have the information ready.
I think we would just have to change the form in the future. During each session, we'd have to keep up with any new laws that pertain to our documents in approving or disapproving the sexually explicit, excuse me, sexually explicit material. Are there any public comments?
President would like to speak in opposition. Mary Loufborough.
Hi, I'm Mary Loufborough from Denham Springs. I don't know what the checklist is, so I may be singing to the choir. I'm not sure. I just want to encourage us to support the parental right of parents to choose what's right for their children. It's not the government's responsibility. It's the parental right, as long as it's not obscene material, which there's a law in the books for that. Censorship is un-American. Thank you.
And can I comment on her statement?
Sure.
We actually have a law. That's what the checklist is for. We went to RS 5225, which is a law that was passed by, is it Representative or Senator Cloud?
Senator Cloud.
Senator Cloud last year, and the checklist is just a broken down section of paragraph in her bill that she talks about what we're not allowed to have in the library. So, we absolutely are only putting on here what the bill said. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
President in support do not wish to speak whether he may, or not, I can't, that's it. And then, President, I have a question for Assistant Jonathan that requires verification. Kathleen Hyde.
Good evening. Kathleen Hyde, District Six. I just really wanted to clarify, since the agenda item says that it's the rubric to be used by the Board of Control, is this also what the staff will be using? Is they're reevaluating the young adult section, or is that different? I just want to make sure I understand the difference.
And we do. We look at, we are using the law to
Okay.
to look through the books, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I just, I haven't seen the rubric, so I just wasn't sure if it was something.
It's basically just Heather Cloud's, that section broken down. She did a really good job with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ready for me to call for the votes? Is this something like we can supply copies of, or at least just like put it on the website? So, everybody can kind of see what it's broke down to? Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chairman, are you ready for a vote? Are you ready to call for a vote, Madam Chairman?
Yes, so.
Ms. Becky?
Mr. Randy? Yes.
Ms. Rodland?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan?
Yes.
Ms. Sheila?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Ms., I'm sorry. Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Dewanna?
Yes.
And Mr. Trey?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
Yes.
All right, that passed.
Madam Chairman, next items, B, C, and D. Would you consider making that one item? We discuss them all at one time?
I have no problem with that.
Is that okay with the board? Okay, madam. Open for discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt all three of those.
I second it.
Motion and seconds of discussion out for the audience. We have any discussion in the audience?
Yes. President in support would like to speak. Jennifer Holden.
Jennifer Holden. Ellie Trace Road French Settlement. Thank you for adopting that, apparently. But I'm gonna go ahead and say what I came here to say anyways, because this will be for future books. I've said in the past that the majority of the Ellen Hopkins books do not belong in the YA section. Someone commented that the publisher makes the age recommendation. Well, that's their job, because they're selling books. Well, that, the library should be doing their due diligence without having to come up here for discussion. But here we are. This book Traffic has been, has sexually explicit material that doesn't belong in a teenager's hands as young as ages, the age of thirteen. I also want to mention that this book has things that could potentially trigger a teen that has been sexually assaulted. I have to ask, if libraries have a degree in mental health, do they know what it is to be trauma aware? The reason I ask is because to place books like this with very traumatic content about assault, you're potentially setting off a trigger to an unhealthy coping habit, not to mention the graphic sexually explicit content about a three-way. The books are not the way to help teens feel like they're not alone with these types of stories if they sadly do relate to this, just in case someone comes up here to argue that this point, argue this point that I've heard before. There's plenty of self-help books out there that this can actually give guidance to. A book like this would have had, would have these graphic parts cut out for a PG-13 movie in the theaters. So, why put it in the YA section? Let's put this book where it belongs, in books like it. Keep the children safe. Let's protect them from harming themselves because of being triggered from a book like this. And in books like this that come up in the future, when we come to challenge, let's try not to have this circus of a thing like we've had in the past. I do appreciate that this was cut out to have to do this, but thank you for letting me speak anyways.
In support, do not wish to speak, Anthony Vance. In opposition, President would like to speak, Marla Elsie.
Hi, Marla Elsie, Denham Springs. I'm not familiar with traffic or people kill people, people kill people, so I'm not gonna speak to those. I do love Looking for Alaska. I love Everything John Green. My kids love Everything John Green. We have Autograph John Green at the house, so I'd hate to see that leave the YA section. But that's not really why I came up. I came up actually just because I'm confused about the book challenges right now with, in the midst of the audit. I thought the audit was going to go through everything and figure out where it should be, so I'm not sure what the challenges are.
So, these were already on the books, the challenges, these three books were already challenged. And so, just to make sure that we're covering our bases and everything is legal, they wanted to go ahead and address these three books, and then from here on out, then yes, everything has been moved.
Gotcha. But this is basically what all the books are gonna go through, this
Yes.
process, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. I was just wondering why.
No problem.
In opposition, do not wish to speak, Tim Elsie. In opposition, would like to speak, Amanda Jones.
Hello, everyone. Amanda Jones, District Two. I am speaking on behalf of the Livingston Parish Library Alliance. We are a nonpartisan organization of Livingston Parish community members whose mission is to support and amplify the work of the Livingston Parish library system and protect the library from both external and internal threats. We have members from all races, religions, political backgrounds, and socioeconomic statuses. While we are all different, we share a love of reading and a love for our public library. We support all members' rights to submit reconsideration requests. It is a right we are all afforded. However, after carefully reading the professional reviews, as well as reading the books, we find significant library value and literary merit in all three of these books. All three books were written with teens in mind, professionally reviewed for teens, and are found in the teen section where they belong. The three books have been in our library for years, won numerous awards, and have had no previous complaints. It is true that the publishing company did set this age range for teens, but so do the plethora of professional review sources used by professionals. We would like to remind the Board that not everyone will like every book and not everyone will approve of every book for their teen. However, we'd also like to remind the Board that we have a tiered library card system that allows every parent the right to decide what their own child can and cannot check out. We at the Livingston Parish Library Alliance respectfully ask you to keep these books in their intended section and to trust our dedicated library workers. We thank all of the Livingston Parish library employees for your dedication to our community, and we thank those of you on the board that have good intentions. Thank you.
In opposition, do not wish to speak, Waverly Callister. In opposition, do not wish to speak, Lexie Dewill. And then, in support, do not wish to speak, Roderick Knopf. And then, in support, do not wish to speak, Wendy Glasscock. And that is it for that one.
All right, well, if there's no more public comment, would we like to call for a vote?
Ms. Becky? What is our motion on the table? The motion to
To remove?
all three?
Yes.
Ms. Rodland?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan?
Yes.
Ms. Sheila?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Ms. Dewanna?
Yes.
Mr. Trey?
Yes.
And Mr. Randy?
Yes.
All right.
Next up, Ms. Becky, about the discussion of the assessment and progress of the temporary relocation of the YA materials to the adult side of the library.
At our last meeting, we voted to move the adult, young adult books off the shelves so that they could all be reviewed. And so, I would just ask Ms. Julia to give us a report so that the public will be aware of where we are at this time in doing what we said we were gonna do.
Good evening, all Board. So, last time, I introduced the physical move part, Michelle gave us deadline end of February. We need to physically move thirty thousand YA materials across the system to adult side. Report on that move is ahead of time. All branches finish all moving physical materials on Valentine's Day, fourteenth, on Friday. So, today, I'm asking, because we're ahead of time, so we were gonna change all the YA material on the computer side to adults. So, limit teen checkout if they're not, if their parents say them to be restricted. I'm asking today, or planning tomorrow, I'm gonna move that up to tomorrow. We're gonna start that process. While the physical moving is going on at the branch level, the review committee already started to review books, put hands on all the books, and, you know, read them, and based on the law, and decide where to go. And the committee has complete section, not much, section of the books. So, we can physical, we can start it to restricting the access to restricted teen. And while starting tomorrow, we start to moving back some, some books, or does not meet the law, back to the teen section, starting tomorrow.
I think we're through to see, right, Julia? So, we're
We're not through.
No, no, she's just letting you know that's because we were gonna, we weren't gonna change that, that criteria in our Polaris system, which is with the checkout, until the end of the month. But since we're early, Julia's just letting you know that we're going to do that, like, tomorrow, instead of waiting till the end of the month.
I had asked, I had asked the previous, the previous meeting of the Board to agree to March first, and we're gonna turn that back in for Julia to do it. There's some stuff she's gotta do back in. We're way ahead of schedule, so she's asking. She can go ahead and do that tomorrow, if you would like.
I would like to thank all the library staff. Please give them my greatest thank you for the expeditious way that they've handled this. Thank you, Ms. Julia.
Yeah, all staff are very hands-on on this.
Yes, thank you.
They moved us essentially among the
I know they have a large job still ahead of them, but thank you for being so far ahead.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I would like to take the opportunity at this time to pass a resolution of congratulations and thanks to the whole library staff, from Michelle on down. This board should take a vote and put it in the minutes how proud we are of the job they've done, the great job they've done. I'd like to make, put that in form of a motion, and you'll need to say it.
Do we need, um, do we need to lift the agenda to add something?
Not underneath this agenda item. We told you, this has to do with the agenda item. It's not separate from the agenda.
And does Julia need our permission to start making that swap over tomorrow in the system?
I don't think so, since y'all already gave her the permission to do it.
Okay.
She's just ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule, yeah.
And we will keep the board, along with the process, of course, the whole project, you know, when we have board meetings and so.
Thank you, Ms. Julia. Thank you.
Before you do call for a vote. Before you, before you call for a vote, Madam Chairman, you gotta let the public speak.
Well, yeah, that's what I was telling you. Public comment, there's nine? Okay, well, then call for a vote.
All right. Ms. Becky?
Yes.
Ms. Rodland?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan?
Yes.
Ms. Sheila?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Ms. Dewanna?
Yes.
Mr. Trey?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
Yes.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is mine. And relates to the budget. At our January meeting, there, I presented the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four proposed budget. And at that time, Mr. Randy asked that he and the new board members be given time to review that November proposed budget. At that meeting, I used the Public Libraries in Louisiana's two thousand twenty-three statistical report to compare Livingston Parish's two thousand twenty-three budget expenditures with the rest of our state library, to show that our library does have conservative spending. So, tonight, what I library, um, to show that our library does have conservative spending. So tonight, um, what I want to do is to demonstrate our library's conservative spending, just focusing on two line items, um, from the library's current budget that was passed in December. So if we looked at the li- the line items in the budget passed in December, line item 6,000 was employee salaries and 6120 was benefits. In our current operating December budget, employees received a cost of living increase in their salaries, um, and that rose to a current total of approximately 3.3 million, while benefits rose to a total of approximately 1.0 million. Mr. Trey provided me with, um, a document called Library Commission's Statement of Revenue Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. So basically, just the expenditures for 2023, so I could see what the library spent in 2023. 2024's expenditures are not available yet because Michelle told me that, um, the auditor doesn't finish her work until June, and then we'll get to see exactly what the library spent in 2024. So the 2023 form is what I have to compare against is what the library actually spent in 2023. In 2023, salaries total approximately 2.7 million and benefits total approximately 525,000, or a little over half a million. So if I can compare the current December budget salaries and benefits to the 2023 salaries and benefits, I see an increase of $558,000, which is approximately a half a billion dollars extra in salaries and benefits that we added into the December budget. So these two line items together, um, would show an increase of 1,833 compared to salary benefits in 2023. So just say 1.1 million extra was added to what was paid in 2023 for salaries and benefits versus what we're paying now and was voted on in December. The library's total expenditures in 2023 totaled 6.4 million. So if I decided to look at the 2023 budget library expenditures and say, I want to use this, what they spent in 2024, to create my budget, I add in the 1.1 million increase in salaries and benefits to these two line items that we've already passed in December. I would get a budget of $7,447,411. The proposed November budget that I put on the agenda tonight has a total expenditure of $7,375,681, which is $71,730 less than if the library adopted the 2023 expenditures with everything the same except for salaries and benefits. So what this tells me is that the November budget is more conservative than I initially thought because it means that the library made cuts in other line items to compensate for the cost of living increases in salaries and benefits that they were offering their employees. And we all know insurance has gone up this past year. So, um, what's more, the November proposed budget did not even add in a 7% increase across the board to account for inflation. So the December budget the library is currently working under is $388,613 less than the November proposed budget, but it's actually more than that because the current budget had already instituted cuts to keep costs down as it increased those two line items for employee salaries and benefits. So the deficit is more like 460,000, less than the 2023 expenditures, if we add in those changes for just salary and benefits. And if we add in inflation, the library is working with much less than it spent in 2023. I know it's a lot of numbers. I've spent the last month spending way too many hours looking at the budgets, and I hope my fellow board members have as well. That is why, um, I am making a motion to amend the 2025 budget to restore all zeroed-out line items and to increase line items that were reduced back to the amounts originally introduced by the administrative librarian at the November 19th, 2024 public budget hearing.
Madam Chairman, if you're going to make the motion, you'll have to surrender the chair unless somebody else is willing to make the motion.
Is someone willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Public comment?
Okay, in support, would like to speak Kathleen Hyde.
Good evening. Kathleen Hyde, District Six. Really, just kind of have a question. I want to offer a couple of comments on one particular item in the budget. Um, and you threw out a lot of numbers. I was trying to follow you as best I could. Um, what, how is that going to impact Comic-Con? Is that being restored? Because that's kind of what I wanted to talk about tonight.
If they do this, it goes back to the original budget that we proposed in November.
Okay.
So yes.
So, um, I just, I wanted to just talk about Comic-Con a little bit because Baton Rouge actually had their Comic-Con recently, um, and I went. I have a child who absolutely just loves everything Comic-Con. Um, and so what I really thought about is, my family of five, we went into Baton Rouge, we did Comic-Con, kids had a great time. I mean, seriously, you should see all of just the joy on the kids' faces as they do this event. Um, and then my entire family went and spent a whole lot of money in Baton Rouge, money that I really wish that we could have spent locally because we went out to eat, we went shopping. Um, and I would really love the opportunity to be able to do that locally and for people to come in from Baton Rouge, from Tanshupahoe, from St. Tammany, and to spend that money in Livingston Parish. Um, so I don't know, maybe this is a lightning rod topic. I wouldn't, I, I don't understand why, not all programming is for everybody. Um, and I really wanted to just talk about what population that events like this are targeting, and that is teens, adolescents, and children. Um, and so I thought, why not talk to you a little bit about teen mental health? Because I do have a degree and license in that subject, and I hope that everybody here loves and cares for the children in our community, and their mental health is declining, and we should be looking for ways to get them more connected, get them connected to community, encourage their creativity. I mean, you should see some of the things that these kids can do with Amazon boxes and hot glue when it comes to these conventions. Their crea- the creativity is just, like, really unparalleled. Um, furthermore, we haven't had any teen programming in this branch since the summer. Not sure if y'all are aware of that. Um, I think maybe it's having issue, not sure. When you've got kids in this community who are homeschooled or homebound, um, I have two teenagers who can't attend traditional public schools for various reasons, and we really, really depended on this library for some social outlet, and we haven't had that. Um, so anyway, I would just like to encourage that we, um, explore those activities and encourage those activities, um, and just to really remind everybody that we have to care more about the kids than simply just about what they read. So I would just ask that we support those activities. Thank you.
In support, do not wish to speak Amanda Jones. In support, do not wish to speak Gail Pittman. In support, would wish to speak Wey McAllister.
Tonight, I ask that the board fully restore the funding for essential library programs that have been cut, including the adult literacy, summer reading, advertising, Comic-Con, and the book festival. Um, these are not just items in a budget, they are lifelines for our community. Adult literacy programs help people secure better jobs, support their families, and gain independence. Summer reading program help keep our children engaged in learning, preventing the loss of hard earned progress through the school year. Without these programs, we are failing those who rely on the library the most. Advertising cuts may seem minor, but they have a real impact. If people don't know about the resources available, they can't take advantage of them. We should be expanding outreach, not reducing it. The same goes for community events like Comic-Con and the book festival. These programs make the library a cultural hub for everyone. Money spent on these services is an investment in education, literacy, and the future of Livingston Parish. If we allow the cuts to stand, we are choosing to limit access, opportunity, and engagement for our residents. I urge you to do the right thing, restore the funding, and ensure that our library continues to serve everyone in this parish. Thank you.
In support, do not wish to speak Lisa Wong. In support, would like to speak Marla Elsie.
Hi, Marla Elsie, Denham Springs. Um, I just wanted to reiterate what I said in November. It was, it was hard to see all the cuts on the budget, um, when they were proposed then, but the one that really hurt my heart the most was the adult literacy. You know, to think about adults in our community trying to do better for themselves, trying to improve their lives or get better jobs or learn how to read for, when they missed out for whatever reason when they were younger. It just hurt to think about cutting all that adult literacy. And I know that the parish council received an astronomical amount of feedback from the community that wanted the budget restored. I know the board that used to sit here received a lot of feedback wanting the budget restored, so I'm just really hoping that you'll all take that to heart and, and pass the original November budget. Thank you.
In support, do not wish to speak Tim Elsie. In support, would like to speak Dorye Dallas.
Madam Chair, if I can, real quick, can y'all eliminate your voice a little bit? It's very difficult to hear when you're back.
Gotcha. Yeah, I can be loud. Um, good afternoon, again. Um, I think, um, i- it's pretty clear, right? The right thing to do here is to pass this budget. Um, what you've seen over the last couple of months clearly is an outcry of community members, of people who love the library, people who know what they're doing, people like, I mean, honestly, thank you so much for looking into the budget and looking at all those numbers. It was a lot, but it's important because when we see how many people this library touches, how many of these programs these people's helps, how much community this builds, um, I mean, it's clear as day, you gotta, you gotta pass this budget and get it restored. Um, if you don't, I think you're going to see a lot, that same crowd come back and back and come back again, um, to fight for it. Um, we love our public goods, just like people love our firefighters, we love our police officers, we love our library too. Um, so please just, just do the right thing here. Let, let's put this behind us. We have a beautifully, beautiful new board. Y'all are working great. Um, I think this is, just, you know, once we get this passed, this we can, we can do a lot more great things for this library. So, thank you.
In support, do not wish to speak Lexie Doole. In support, do not wish to speak Eliot Smorland. In support, do not wish to speak Brandy Smith. In opposition, would like to speak Larry Davis.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Madam Chair. Whenever considering a budget, uh, me and Michelle, you remember our little talk, three hours, um, it's not our job, when we're stewarding taxpayer dollars, to think about what we want to see, not even what an individual family would like to see. You have to look at the whole. And I want to remind this board that when the voters voted for this tax back in the 90s, it was to construct, maintain, and acquire. That is the job of the library system. Police officers are not holding carnivals. Fire departments are not holding firework shows because they think that'd bring the community together. The library is here to supply literacy and technology to the wider community. It is not your job to spend it on anything else other than that. And I know that it's hard to tell people no, but we're living in a society where people are happy to spend other people's money, and it's not fair. People are hurting today in this society for needs and things that aren't even necessary. So I urge the board to keep with the budget that was passed in December. Thank you, Ms. Dorre Howard, for giving us credit, um, for doing that. And don't be coerced by a few angry emails. You represent 155,000 people, 155,000. We now have a president who represents millions of people. He's making some hard decisions. He's looking at the numbers. He's following the math and looking at how each person is impacted. That's your job. Steward the tax dollars. You're not here to create programs. You're here to make sure that we're in line with what the voters voted for, and you're spending the money that represents that tax code. Thank you for your hard work.
And just a reminder to say your name and where you're from whenever you come up to the microphone.
In opposition, would like to speak Gregory Neff.
Hello, I'm Gregory Neff from Maripom. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name's Gregory Neff. I'm proud resident of Maripom and president of Revive America. It's a think tank and advocacy organization that researches and promotes biblical worldview within our public policy. Tonight, I want to share some serious concerns about our fiscal responsibility and the perception that those in the room that should be regarding our role in governance. I remind you the words of Luke 14:28 through 30, which emphasizes the importance of counting costs before embarking on any endeavor. And likewise, 2 Timothy 2:6 just reminds us that the farmer, representing all hardworking individuals and businesses, should receive the first share, not government. Unfortunately, what we witness is a profound misconnection. We see bureaucrats and government officials treated the people not as his superiors, but as mere subjects that are expected to submit to an ever-hungry leviathan. They see the earnings as theirs, believing that we should be content with whatever scraps they deem to leave us attending their own priorities in programs. Tonight's meeting is a perfect illustration of this. Here we are debating basically a whole new budget. This budget is not a list of proposed expenses. It's a transparent attempt to lay the groundwork for increased taxation following last year's tax, on tax hike. Let's begin with, let's talk about baseline budgeting for a moment. It's arguably the most inefficient wasteful process ever devised in human history. This accounting method fosters a culture of excessive spending within government, allowing budgets to swell at pace that outstrips inflation and cost of living. The Book of Kings resold this, warning that early rulers will lead us into traps of financial irresponsibility. However, I want to highlight there is a glimmer of hope emerging in the federal budget. As, uh, previously mentioned, visionaries like Elon Musk are promoting fiscal responsibility alongside leaders like President Trump to tackle downsizing in excess on Washington. Now, if you truly want to demonstrate to the constituents here tonight that you're not merely puppets of bureaucratic machine, if you want to prove to me wrong about betrayal of you and the parish's library system, then I call you to take the decisive action tonight. Bring forth a motion to put an independent audit to look for wasted inefficiency in the system. Show us that you're committed to reforming government to serve the people rather than itself. Failing to act on this is not simply a sign of negligence, is a failure to fulfill your obligations under Louisiana revised statute 25:211 through 213, which outlines the authority of local libraries and your fiduciary duty and responsibilities of community funds. It is essential to understand that most of what we discuss, um, discussed tonight seems to go beyond that scope of the legislation. We must accept that this unlawful spending end up in court of law defenses on fallacies of appeal to tradition and popular will not suffice. So I urge you, let's move forward with transparency, accountability, and commitment to serving the people rather than the bureaucracy. In closing, let me remind you the succinct words of President Calvin Coolidge. Collecting more taxes than is absolutely necessary is legalized robbery. With much of what is proposed in your budget failing to fit the state statute, legalized becomes dubious at best. So I ask you, are you servants or thieves? Thank you for your attention and opportunity to address these pressing matters.
That's your time.
In opposition, would like to speak Anthony Vance.
Anthony Vance, Denham Springs. I live here in District Three. Um, I'm asking you, what is the purpose of restoring the whole budget? What are we lacking? The adult literacy that keeps getting thrown around, it's under the adult programming. There is nothing there that can't be done under the adult programming with the budget that's there that can't be, that needs to be under a specific line item. Nobody's been able to point that out. The Comic-Con, why do we need $27,000? $10,000, it was spent $14,000 last year. My understanding, there was probably about $4,000 spent on water. I bet you, we could go down to Rouse's, we could go to Carter's, we could go to a number of places and have that much water donated. Can somebody explain to us why we need an additional, I don't know, $13,000 to spend on Comic-Con? Yes, the money's going to come in. We can spend $10,000 and bring those same people in, and they're still going to spend the money at our restaurants, the different places. If they're coming from out of town, they might stay at the hotels. So why can't we have the transparency? We, why don't we have, this is a different subject, but, um, we need to be transparent. We can change the single line items if we need, but there's been nothing that has been affected in the month and a half, almost two months, that y'all have been operation under this December budget. So why do we need to impose the entire budget? Thank you.
In opposition, would like to speak Summer Smith.
Summer Smith, 31210, Dan Pearson, Holden, Louisiana. All right, let's talk about this inflated budget. Um, it has been stated by the director that the budget is inflated. She even admitted that it isn't right to do that, but she stated, that's just the way we, it's done. There is a tremendous amount of waste that is going on at the library. For example, do we really need another bookmobile? I know that the, a second bookmobile is in the strategic plan, but please take into consideration that every public school has a library, and there are public library branches scattered throughout the parish in every direction now, eliminating the need for multiple bookmobiles. throughout the parish in every direction now, eliminating the need for multiple bookmobiles. Also advertising, why do we need to have $65,000 for advertising? What are we selling? Also, why are we paying a company to print flyers when the parish library owns a state-of-the-art copy machine and lots of employees, including a full-time information director? Travel and training, combined is 51,000. When I was on the board, we asked for an itemized statement on travel and training, which we were denied. How many out-of-state conferences and training seminars does a library director and other administration need to attend? Are you utilizing online training? Who does she answer to on travel if not the board? E audio and audiobooks. The budget was available to continue hoopla until June. And in the meantime, the director was supposed to show us the contracts. However, the decision was made by the director to turn off hoopla in January, purposefully causing an unnecessary attack on the board. These are only a few of my concerns, as I only have three minutes to speak. I challenge the new board members to take this inflated budget off the table and amend the new budget as needed for proper operation of the library. The original suggested budget was just that, it was a suggestion. It admittedly overinflated. Let's move forward with the budget amendments while being mindful of wasteful spending of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Just got this one. In support, we'd like to speak Elizabeth Montenau. And that's the last one.
Hello, and thank you all for the work that you do, because it is certainly a thankless task, no matter which side you land on, I am sure. I'm Elizabeth Montenau. I am from District 9. I am in that weird space that says it's Independence, but is actually Livingston Parish, live just past Holden. And I am a business owner, I'm a small business owner, and extremely proud of the fact that I have built a business from Livingston Parish, Louisiana, that encourages reading around the country. Last year, we were able to go from Ocean City, Maryland, to LA, California, sharing bookish things for bookish people made here in Livingston Parish by my family and our neighbors across the parish. We have a small team that helps us keep everything handmade, and the library budget is actually something that I have heard about from other readers across the country, our Livingston Parish library budget. It is highly encouraging to me to see this back on the agenda tonight. I highly encourage you to restore the budget that was voted on in good faith in November. And I am, I am just very thankful, at the moment, to be off the road and able to be here with you tonight. Normally I, excuse me, normally I travel for work, and so it has not been easy to attend these meetings, but I am very much in support of our libraries, our librarians, and all that you do. Thank you.
Okay, if that's all the public comment.
I actually have a comment real quick. I know you, somebody made the comment that the budget was going back up to 27,000 for Comic-Con, is that correct?
No, it's not. No, it's 20,000.
Okay. I know you and I, Jennifer, we spent a little while with the director talking about the Comic-Con budget. Would you accept a friendly amendment to lower it back down to 16.5, which is what we agreed on?
For the November budget? From the move, to move down the November budget?
For the Comic-Con event specifically? I know the director was pleased with the 16.5, that was within there.
She was pleased with the 16.5.
So would you be open to a friendly amendment to adjust it to that?
I would. Do I have to have a second?
I'd like to make a comment, I'd like to make a comment. Oh, and it's kind of going along with what Jonathan is discussing. Tori, before she resigned from the board, with Mr. Moody's advice, formed an ad hoc finance committee, and we discussed some things with Michelle. And, you know, obviously, Comic-Con was a big issue because of the $10,000 that was in the budget and needing 16, 16.5 for it to happen. And so that brought us together to discuss that item and to discuss a lot of the budget needs that were, I guess you'd say, up in air about what is needed to be able to, for the library to continue functioning wholeheartedly. And so we spent, you know, several hours discussing that. And I think that to help, there's several things that need to be addressed, and I addressed those in an email. Once we went through several items, Michelle sent us a budget with some highlighted items that the, that the team had discussed on bringing before the board. And so that was sent to you in an email. And I think it would be very wise for us not to, you know, to not just Comic-Con, but there's several other items that the director told us in our discussions could stay where they were. For example, security didn't need to be raised up to what the proposal was. There was other items like, like the travel, we didn't raise up any more than what the adopted budget says, and that was, you know, and we had a blessing from the director on that. So there were several items of that nature. Comic-Con could even come down even more later, you know, some of the logistics that can be worked out with overtime could help improve that. But, so I would like, you know, once we did all of those changes in the email that y'all got from me, that Michelle prepared with highlighted lines, it did add $157,000 back to the budget, and 96,000 of that came by ebooks and e-audiobooks. And so, and if we accepted the amendments to the adopted budget without, without trying to constantly amend a November budget that failed, and just amend exactly what we have adopted, I believe we, I believe we do the taxpayer much more being responsible, knowing that we have taken the time and really dug into each item and showing in the long run that we can provide. And so when all those things are added on that, on what the, on what the team had done, again, it's, we're still spending $373,000 more than we did last year, which is 6%, 6% increase in expenses. And so if we, if unfortunately, in the situation that we're in, I think that we could continue to go, and I, and from the amendments that, that were given out in the email would carry us more than likely through the whole, through the whole year. So, and, and not have to have, you know, an inflated budget. And what concerns me as well is even if we pass the November budget, you know, every government agency has, has a 5% variance. If we pass that budget, and let's just say something crazy, and 5% variance was used on the total of that number, and many line items needed a 5% variance, we would spend more money than we took in. And I just don't think that that is a wise decision to make. And, but if we just do the amendments to the already adopted budget that we spent several hours on, had the confirmation of our library staff and the director giving us the blessing on those things, we still, even if we spent the 5% variance, we're right in line with what the money that had come in. And so I think it just sets a picture and sets a precedent to our, to the taxpayers that, that we are striving to be accountable and making sure that, that their money, not our money, their money, is being used to the best interests of the people. So with that being said, and Jonathan, I know you wanted an amendment to it, I would like to make a substitute motion that, that we approve the amendments that were presented to us, presented to y'all in an email, and to amend the adopted budget according to, according to the changes that were made by the finance team. And so I'd like to make that substitute motion.
Wait a second.
Just one of them.
Which would, which would bring Comic-Con to 16.5? And that's the same, we're gonna...
Could I ask a question?
Is there a second?
Okay, we need a second for that.
I'll second it.
Do you want a second?
What was the amount you gave us a while ago, Trey, 300 and something?
Yeah, so that 373, 373,000 I was talking about. So with the amendments that, that we, that were discussed, and again, just with the blessing of our staff and the director, $373,000 more than what we spent in 2024. Well, what was proposed to be spent in 2024, as of 9, as of 9/30/24.
So instead of a substitute motion, would you like to ask if it's a friendly amendment before we continue?
It's not a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Madam Chair, a substitute. Madam Chair, could I make a comment?
You got a second, DeWanna, a second.
Do we get public comment on substitutions?
Well, yeah, if it's not been listed on the agenda as that way, is there public comment already on the budget in general, or they already received that?
They did for the budget.
They already did.
We did public comment.
So if you want to be really transparent, you could say, is there any additional public input on the substitute motion?
I have, I have a question. I don't think I'm the only board member that is not informed about the justification and the reasons for amending the budget. To, I mean, we got it in the email, saw it the other day, read through it, and I asked the question to Trey in an email, where's the justification? Why are these changes being made? Because the whole board, obviously, is not the committee, right? It's the subset of this board that's the committee. So in my opinion, we need time, those of us that are not on the committee, need time to see what that justification is, because I'm with you, I pay taxes too. And I like to know where our money's going, and I like to spend it accordingly, because it's all of our money. And when we make changes to a budget like this, I guess I'm nosy, I want to know why. Why, why are we making these changes? What's the justification? Why are we going down to 16.5 for Comic-Con? Why, why are we doing different things? So I personally would like to see all the backup documentation justification before we wholeheartedly amend the budget. That's just my opinion.
Are y'all gonna allow budget?
Yeah, yeah. Follow with it.
Do we need, they need to fill out forms again, or?
Yeah, to follow the rules.
Do we want to take a minute or two recess to let people fill out?
I would, yeah, I would do that. Do we need a motion then?
I think the chair can rule, just give a one-minute recess.
All right, we'll have a one-minute recess, so that y'all can fill out forms again to speak the budget.[1413.57] All right. Public comment, David?
Yes, okay. In support of the substitute motion, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
In support of the substitute motion, in support, do not speak Greg Neff. In support, would like to speak Summer Smith. Jennifer Holden, in support, would like to speak.
Jennifer Holden, L.A. Trace. We've just watched Doge expose some crazy stuff, right? Really crazy stuff. And whether we want to believe it or not, it's there. And the reason why we want to see line by line as a taxpaying citizen, all these years, we've been told that social security's drying up. And we find out now, there's people three hundred years old on social security, still active. This is why we need to see line by line. I want to know myself, what's on there? What all is, is anything doubled? What's going on? So why not? Let's look at it. Take a look, let's see. That's all I got to say.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes.
Um, not to you, sorry. Just, it just feels like it's probably about to get a little tense. And if I could just ask everybody on, no matter what side, if you could just respect everybody else in here and listen, no talking, no, you know, like, just, if we're listening, can we all listen quietly? That's all. Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Be kind.
Be kind, yes, please.
In support, would like to speak Larry Davis.
Thank you again. Transparency is great. I encourage, one of the things that I encourage the staff to do is, a budget can be amended at any time. Let the administration come before you as the board and in front of the public and say, hey, I need a ten thousand dollar increase here. And so the public can ask questions, you, the board, can ask questions. It doesn't need to be approved retroactively. If she needs twenty dollars for water in the budget, and it goes over budget, get her here before the board, ask her to explain it, and then y'all can amend the budget there. I think that's transparency. I think that's holding the staff accountable. And I think that's a good thing to do. Thank you, Trey. What did that, Madam Chair, may I ask the board member a question?
Are they allowed to ask specific questions? Especially people I was told it weren't.
Well, you can answer if you like. Most public bodies don't respond to public input because then it becomes a community meeting back and forth, so.
What did that increase? Where's your new meal, or your new total now?
I'll answer you when, when we're done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In support, would like to speak Summer Smith.
Thank you, Summer Smith, District Nine. Yes, I am in favor of the amendment because we need a little more accountability, a little more transparency, especially when people are telling you that the budget is over. It's just inflated. We just would really like a chance to look at each item, and it would be very, very much appreciated if you would allow us to do that. Thank you.
In support, do not speak Anthony Davis. Then, in opposition, would like to speak Kathleen Hyde.
Kathleen Hyde, District Six. I'm going to say something that will probably never come out of my mouth again, but I actually agree with Larry Davis that transparency is a great thing, which is why I would like to ask a little bit more information on when this ad hoc finance committee was held, when that met, when it was appointed, since that wasn't a meeting that was open to the public. So when was that appointed and held? Because I'm the one who's submitting the public records requests, so I would like to get some more information on that.
So Tori sent an email to Mr. Moody and asked if that could be formed. They've met twice, both Mondays, this, Monday before this one, and then Monday before that. Correct?
February third, February tenth.
Yes, sorry. Thank y'all. I'm, I don't have a calendar for it. Well, I do, my phone. I didn't think about it. And it, I think they met for about an hour and a half, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
In opposition, do not speak Lexie Doolittle. In opposition, would like to speak, is this Ann Harris?
And can I ask the Director, when, when you had those two meetings that were publicized on the website or Facebook?
No, they weren't, because it's just an ad hoc committee. This, this committee was never formally formed through the board.
So it was different from the meeting, the policy meeting we had. Okay. Just, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Harris, District Four. I have a couple of questions about the budget money. And Mr. Delatt, I think you might be the most appropriate person to answer that. Is the money to fund the November budget already, it's already funded? Am I understanding that correctly? It's a funded budget. So this budget is not being amended due to any deficits and money to fund it. Okay, thank you. Now, the other question is, we've heard about the money coming back to us taxpayers, which I have paid my fair share of in this parish for forty years, more. So how do I get it back? Is there going to be a refund through the sheriff's office on our tax notice?
You do not. What is collected by the sheriff comes in and it stays in our account. If it doesn't get spent, then it just stays in the account.
So my library is not going to have services, my taxes are going to be collected, and they're not going to be returned to me. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. I'd like, before I get too behind on questions, I'd like to address a couple of them that have been asked. Mr. Davis's question was, was what would be our millage at? So that with these amendments, our total expense is six point nine four three million. The, the projected income of property tax is six point nine eight, so we're right around what is being charged to the people. Obviously, the total income is a little more because of fees that the library may collect, the interest that the library earns on its accounts and things of that nature. So, and so, and then to the, to the lady that just asked, I forget your name, I apologize. So, you know, if there is a surplus, obviously, nobody's going to write you a check back. But every year, every year come September, this board is going to set a millage. And if there's five hundred thousand dollars that we didn't use this year, next year, your taxes to the library can be lowered in order that you can still have the same healthy service, but in next year, it's going to be a little bit cheaper. And then the next year, when we come around and we set another budget, we say, well, you know, obviously, the taxes, we can approve a millage up to, up to ten meals, that's what was voted on, up to ten meals to have a healthy, flourishing library. And we had the decision to set that millage. And so when we look at, when we look at what is transpiring, so all, you may not get it back and the sheriff's sending you a check, but your, your bill for a year may, could be lower, and you still have the same service. Nothing's being cut. I want to make that clear. Nothing is being cut.
I'd like to respond if possible.
Uh, no, you don't, you, you already used your time. Sorry.
I was called by name.
You already used your time.
May I speak?
It's, it's the board's decision, not mine. I'm sorry.
You used your time.
Thank you.
Was that all your?
Yeah.
Can I ask the legal counsel, is it possible for us to send people a check back if we don't use their money?
Uh, no, but Trey mentioned the way it would happen. You can reduce your millage for the next year. If you don't, if you're, if you have a surplus that's growing, you're required to do that, actually, over time. So, but it's also healthy to have a healthy surplus in cases for emergencies, too.
Correct. Okay.
But the library does have a savings account already, which is why there's no need to increase our surplus.
Right. But at the same time, we don't want to be wasting money just because we got it.
No, I suggest money just that we waste it just because we have it.
We are. We're going to approve a twenty thousand dollar Comic Con when the Director clearly said sixteen five, get this thing done. We're saying taxpayers forty-five hundred dollars, forty-five hundred dollars a dollar, we're just going to put it out there.
I already approved that friendly amendment, though. We're going to reduce that to sixteen five.
Well, I think, I think she might have to, she moved.
Yeah, she might have to, yes.
Go back to public comment.
So public comment, please.
In opposition, do not speak Elise Wong. In opposition, would like to speak Francine Smith.
All right. Francine Smith Watson. I did want to address something that was mentioned earlier, the bookmobile. I'm a school librarian here in Livingston Parish. I'm at Pine Ridge School. It's a very small school. If you don't know anything about it, it's a school for kids who get suspended or expelled from school. We have almost no per pupil funding. And for many years, the bookmobile would come and bring books to our school. And a lot of the smaller schools on the other side of the parish are also probably underfunded and don't have the same resources that the big schools have. And I know the benefit from that. Actually, they used to come and do little puppet shows with our little kids. I really appreciated it. So somebody mentioned the school libraries earlier, not needing, you know, services at the bookmobile. So I disagree, as a professional school librarian. I have another question. How many times has a library ever gone over budget and spent all their money?
Can I answer?
Yes, please answer that.
Never.
Never. Okay. And so what do you do with the extra money? You just?
It goes into, can I answer?
Please answer, yes.
It goes into capital outlay to fund projects like an additional bookmobile, or like the carpet replacement that we did here in Denham, things that are of major need for the library.
Right. So you don't have to borrow the money or raise taxes?
No.
And if you did find that you had a surplus, you could always roll it back?
Yes.
But if you cut these line items down smaller, then you're constrained, and then you may not have a meeting for two months, and then you would have to wait to do things that needed to be done. Somebody talked about taxpayers, and I'm a taxpayer. I have four kids. They're grown now, but I really appreciated the library, all the programs, the events, you know. It's something that when you don't have money, I don't know, somebody, somebody, I think Larry said there were a hundred fifty-five thousand people in this parish, Comic Con, they weren't.
We were told, we were told the attendance on Comic Con's about two thousand.
Okay, so sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars per Comic Con comes out to just under eleven cents per person. So I would be more than happy to spend, well, there's five people in my house, less than a dollar for us to go and have fun for the day with my kids, you know. That's just me. I hope that you don't pass the amended budget, and I hope that you do pass the original budget. Thanks.
In opposition, would like to speak Ryan Westmoreland.
Ryan Westmoreland, Denham Springs. I really don't want to speak. So first, I just want to make sure that, that it's right, that it says amend the adopted budget to the original budget presented on the November nineteenth budget hearing. So can they just make amendments like that without lifting the agenda? Because it's a totally different budget that he's trying to pass, or?
It falls within the same umbrella of topic matter, so.
Okay, so that, because it's specific, it doesn't matter?
It's, falls within the same umbrella.
Okay. And then, secondly, I just wanted to say about this ad hoc finance committee meeting. I hope that the new president doesn't try to do ad hoc committees to get around open meetings, because I, I don't, that should have been a public meeting, and using the word adcock, ad hoc doesn't make it any better. It might in the law, but it doesn't, it doesn't in the, in the, being transparent. I'm just asking that you pass the original budget again. This is the second month I've been here to ask that, and I've been to meetings before that, but the second one I've had to speak at. I don't like speaking. I don't like coming here. So hopefully, we can pass the original budget, and then I won't have to come back anymore. And then I just wanted to also reiterate that I feel like saying that the budgets of Comic Con's twenty thousand and saying that Michelle only needs sixteen five, I don't, in my opinion, Michelle is not going to spend twenty thousand if she doesn't need twenty thousand. So it's, it's kind of like, I don't know, I just feel like that's kind of, um, sorry. I'm done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say that on the ad hoc committee, I believe that all, that everybody that was on that committee agrees that we were going to have our public meeting. Unfortunately, the budget discussion needed to come at the same meeting that the committee would be next. So I, I, just to try to clear that up, once the committee is announced. But unfortunately, the sky was about to fall in on Comic Con, so we had to get things taken care of. I mean, let's just be honest about it, all right? I mean, let's not hide anything then, if we're gonna.
David.
The sky was falling.
In opposition, would like to speak Jordan Gonzalez.
Good afternoon again, Jordan Gonzalez in the Springs. So I, I don't, I think it's important, right, that we just go ahead and, and put this behind us. I think it's clear that this is a continuation of a very loud and vocals, or, but a small minority of people in this parish who really just have an issue with public goods. No matter what, they're going to try to take anything out of this budget that they possibly can, and, and nick picket and, and to death, it's like a death by a thousand cuts. But at the end of the day, there's nothing wrong with looking at a budget, taking it back, and seeing where some efficiencies can grow, right? I think it's like Abraham Lincoln once said, it's like, you know, if you gave him six hours to cut down a tree, he's going to take four hours of that sharpening the axe, right? So doing, doing your due diligence is good. This budget that we've had since November, a lot of people have looked at it. A lot of people who know what they're doing have looked at it line by line. It's, it's very transparent. There's all the line items in there. Nobody's asking for, you know, specific receipts. That would be a ridiculous thing, right? Michelle is more than capable of coming up with a good budget. You know, we need to trust her expertise and trust our librarians. You know, we're a growing parish. There's no reason that we want less money going to our libraries over time. Each year, we should want the library spending more money. Not necessarily a ten thousand, or, or ten times more than they did last, but something that makes sense compared to our growing public, our, our growing community, because it is growing every year. There's also inflation to worry about. So that's other reasons why things have to go up, you know, prices have to go up. So, look, if you don't pass a budget, you're going to have people down y'all's throats. Because again, people love these services, and they use these services. Don't listen to people who have no idea what they're talking about, who don't use these services, who just want, what, five dollars less on their, on their, their property taxes for this. The library is an important thing to fund. We should be doing that. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you.
In support, would like to speak Amanda Robaire.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Robaire. The phrase that keeps coming to mind as we're discussing this is live beneath your means. I think that's smart to do in your own families, as well in your business, your businesses. My husband and I own businesses between here and Florida. We do not allocate all of our money just to spend it somewhere. Having a savings is important. I think everyone would agree with that. In your personal life, you have a goal of setting aside money, and you don't just spend money just to spend it. We're not going to, you know, buy extras at the grocery store just for the sake of spending your grocery budget. If there's places it could be cut. So I think just taking a look where we could save money, and eventually, it would roll over for less taxes, be in the millage. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate you all taking the time to look over the budget and spending your personal time away from your family's doing so. Thank you.
This person said I have any questions to do not, and there requires verification. Marla Elsie, Denham Springs. I filled out a yellow card. It probably should have been
red. It was just, that was very, very confusing, so that's why a yellow card went up. I just had a few random notes I wanted to mention. First of all, when we talk about, my hope is that you'll restore the original November budget that was proposed by the Director. But when you're speaking about the November budget that was passed, that's the reduced one. The original Director's budget was never voted on. It never even came up for a vote to begin with. The only one that ever came up for a vote was the reduced one. So the language there got very fuzzy and confusing for me, so that's what prompted the yellow one. Just make sure you know what you're voting on when the time comes. As for the finance committee, I'm still confused about that one, too. Public records requests show that it was, the ad hoc committee was created on January thirtieth, which was a Thursday. It met, you said just now, it met on?
I think the Monday.
The Monday after, February the third. That doesn't conflict with anything, so I don't know why it wasn't a public meeting. That doesn't conflict with anything, so I don't know why it wasn't a public meeting. Um, the, um, the policy committee met last week, it had a public meeting, I thought it went really well, I thought it was well-handled and well-received by the public. And so, I don't know, it just looked, I mean, I'm sure that wasn't the intention, but it looks bad, it looks shady to have behind closed-door meetings about finances and then come in here and start trying to talk about a budget. Um, I'll say it again, like I said last time, that original budget that never even got a chance to be voted on was overwhelmingly ten to one supported by the public, y'all know that, you saw the outcry, you saw the people freaking out on social media and showing up in record numbers at these meetings and emailing the council and begging for their stuff back. And when Mr. Cowell says the reduced budget's going to get you the same healthy service, no, it's not. We didn't have hoopla at the beginning of the year. Uh, I mean, it, it was not the same healthy service we've already always had, and it's not going to be the same healthy service we've already always had unless you put that original budget back in place, so, thank you.
Two plows, one.
Michelle, didn't we vote on that, we, we voted on that and it tied, didn't it, on the original budget?
Um, yeah.
And so therefore it didn't tie?
Yes, maybe it did. I can't, I can't remember the one, I have to go back.
I, I, we did.
It did tie.
We did.
Can I ask Michelle a question?
Becky, yes.
And Michelle?
When you clarified earlier, when you, uh, said to us, the, you, has the library ever spent a total amount allocated in a budget? You said no. What about the, I know it can go one way or the other, five percent?
Right.
Has it even gotten close that you know of?
A couple of line items, but never the full budget.
I'm asking about the full budget.
Never the full budget, never, never within five either way.
Well, I know that, I know that the, the report that I looked at from twenty twenty-three absolutely did not.
Right, and it's been about the same.
Ever since.
Everything is pretty much, I mean, it only fluctuates by, like I said, I think we look at five percent increase for this election this year.
Everywhere along in that budget.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Michelle, hoopla's on, right?
Hoopla is back on.
Hoopla's on, and we didn't have to approve a November budget to get hoopla on.
But you did have to put in line items back on.
We did, and that's what we've been doing, that's what we've been doing, and that's what I'm stressing tonight.
May I ask Michelle a question?
You can.
Let's call for a vote, Madam Chair.
Whenever, um, did, did you not say that there was funds for hoopla until June?
We're not going to cover this.
And so, why did, why was it turned off in January?
That's part of the... That was, it was turned off because you zeroed out movies, e-movies and e-music, and that is part of that platform. Without those two line item budget numbers there, I could not keep that on.
Okay, I call for a vote. Um, so we first have to vote on the amendment?
Substitute motion.
Substitute amendment.
Madam Chair, would you please, um, reiterate what we're voting on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trey, would you like to clarify your amendment?
Could you specify the line items?
Can you specify the line item that you want?
So, uh, the amendments that were, that were made and was distributed to you, highlighted in yellow, uh, is adult literacy, readers' club, Comic-Con, and these, uh, all, um, were increases, ebooks, uh, e-audio books, advertising, marketing and promotions, uh, summer reading, and then there was some, uh, increase, uh, in book festival and adult programs, or the items.
So, your amendment is to?
Yeah, so my motion would be to amend the adopted budget that we're working with right now, to change, uh, those line items to what was presented.
And can I clarify the original?
Yes.
Motion?
The original motion was to, um, adopt the twenty twenty-five Livingston Parish budget to the original budget presented on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, at the budget hearing.
So, we have a...
And he's amending that to just reinstate the specific line items that you said?
Right.
Specifically which were?
Uh, adult literacy, readers' club, Comic-Con, ebooks, e-audio books, and it's restated, and it's, and it's, uh, and it's to the amounts that were highlighted in, uh...
In the email that you sent out.
Yeah. Uh, adverti...
But you don't have copies of that for us.
I sent it to you.
Yeah, I sent an email, but you don't have a copy.
I don't have a copy.
I made sure that it was printed out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she's got copies, you got copies.
All right, so I want to call for a vote on the amendment?
Should we tell the, should we tell the public what, what the exact numbers are? Because the amended budget, I'm new to this, y'all, you're going to have to bear with me completely. Uh, the amended budget was six point five seven, is that right? Is that what it is? And then Trey has added, this was in Novi, the one that was, because it says it was amended in December, right?
Oh, that, that six point five, that six point five that you're looking at on your paper was where they were, uh, that was the amended, uh, twenty twenty-four budget as of nine thirty of twenty-four, yeah.
That's right, and you added, when the committee met, we added back three hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, that, so what your, what the amended?
No, 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 we added back, no, that's how much we, that's how much we...
I'm calling, I'm stopping our discussion and just calling for a vote on the amendment that Trey's got before us.
Yeah.
So, we, we need to vote on that amendment as to whether we think we want to go forward with that or not.
Y'all ready? So, yes, we're going, no, we're not?
So, yes, it's going forward with, with Trey's amendment and not Becky's motion.
Okay, so, Ms. Becky, no?
No.
Um, Ms. Rodland?
No.
Ms. Jennifer?
No.
Ms. Sheila? I'm sorry, I'm not completely sure what I'm voting on.
This would be the amendment.
To amend it, those line items.
Which is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars different than what the other?
Right.
Budget is?
Talking about millions.
More than twenty-four thousand.
In total, with these line items, the adult literacy, the...
It's a little more than any books, uh, promotions. It's just the total of these line items are that amount of savings.
Why aren't we being rushed? Should we still add questions?
Is that the correct number, a hundred twenty-four thousand? Is the total of the line items that we're changing?
Is the difference of the two budgets?
Uh, a hundred and thirty-one is what I calculated.
Okay.
And, and the total budget of the two different budgets is, what, seven million?
Yeah, so...
Six point nine million?
Yes, so, yes, yes.
Six point nine three and six point eight.
And then seven point?
Right. It's a half a million.
It's about half a million.
Half a million.
It's a half a million?
Ms., Ms. Sheila?
Ms. Sheila?
No.
Mr. Jonathan, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
No.
Ms. Dewana?
Yes.
Mr. Trey?
Yes.
Mr. Randy?
No.
Okay, that failed. Um, for the original motion, Ms. Becky?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Rodland?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan?
No.
Uh, Ms. Sheila?
Yes.
Ms. Patricia?
Yes.
Ms. Dewana?
No.
Mr. Trey?
No.
Mr. Randy?
Yes.